All right, I'm excited to call this meeting to order. Our first one back in 15 months, 16 months? Too long, too long. And if you would please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And when we're seated and ready, we have a roll.
Steve Clemens.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozart is absent with excused. David Glave is also absent with excused. Nicole Howard absent with excuse. Man Miesner.
Here.
And Justin Mauch.
Here.
So we're short, but we have a quorum, which is okay, which means that we proceed with our meeting. Agenda is as presented. We have a consent agenda with four items. Approval of the regular session meeting minutes from our June 2nd and June 14th meetings. June 14th was a special session, so that we have to report those minutes as well. And then we have approval approving three OLC liquor license applications. And unless any counselor wants to pull an item from that consent agenda, we could take care of them all with one motion.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're good to go. Public comments, wow, we haven't had these in a while. So if anybody would like to make public comments, please step to the podium. All you need to do is say your name, and there's a form in the back, and you are limited
My name's Greg Amor, Washington Street, La Grande. A member of the Budget Committee. When we were discussing the budget, I'd asked the Building Department about why they needed a million dollars in the reserve account. And I was told by the Building Department that that was a state requirement, that they had to have a reserve, otherwise the state would take the Building Department away from them. I contacted the state Oregon, asked the state Building Department if that is a requirement. Their answer was no. Now according to your approved budget, you have $946,000 in unappropriated funds, you have $200,000 reserved for future expenditures, and you had $100,000 in contingencies for the Building Department. That's $1.2, $1,250,000. That's a lot of money that you don't have any budget for to spend. Now, you like to compare apple to oranges, Mayor, so I looked up the Baker budget, they got $430,000 in their reserve account for the Building Department. You've got a million dollars. You like having money in your reserve, but how can you justify it? And so I'd like an explanation for that, and if you can't, I'd like for you to lower the permit fees to get them down to half a million dollars to refund that money to the citizens in the county and the city, because you have no use for that money. What's the worst year you ever had in the Building Department for revenue? I tried to go back to the budgets and look at it. Used to be able to go back to 2006, 2007. Today, when I looked up, now all of a sudden, you can't even see the budget on the website previous to 2015. So you can't even go back and look that far. That's my first question. My second question is, being on the Budget Committee, public records, the way I understand them, everything that's said in these meetings are supposed to be public record. But on the Budget Committee, we ask questions of the city manager before the budget hearings, and he answers budget questions. But that stuff is never disclosed to the citizens. I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been here as a public asking questions, and I've had the city council say, oh yeah, we discussed that already, but it was never disclosed. One of the examples was just like the Parks Department. How do you justify buying a three-quarter ton versus a half-ton? Some of the questions were, what pickups do you already have? Well, you have a 2019 Dodge three-quarter ton pickup, you have a 2017 Ford three-quarter ton pickup, and you only have one big mower to pull around from the parks. But the citizens would never know that, because that was a question that was asked before the budget hearings.
Would anybody like to comment on this?
Well, I think a couple of those questions, at least, are something that the city council wouldn't be likely to know. They're more administrative things. I don't know, Robert, if you care to respond to, I mean, I'm personally glad we've got money, set aside, other than the other way around, but it does seem like a lot.
Yeah, a couple things. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Amor. I don't, I recall the building official talking about best practice being two years of operating in the reserve. I don't remember the specific a million dollar figure, but I won't trouble that with you. The Building Department is, functions as an enterprise business zone, so the dollars that come in there stay there. And whether or not the permit fees should be lowered because of the amount of reserve would be a discussion to have, whether or not it would make sense to lower those so that future purchases of building permit fees cost less, doesn't really return the dollars back to those that paid the fees in the past. It just doesn't work that way, so there's not a direct connection between who paid the fees and essentially a refund back of it. The dollars are not taken and used in other city departments, and the amount of the reserves does provide for maintaining stability in the building permit fees, which have not changed in several years. We did a realignment to come in compliance with some state stuff a few years ago, but it's certainly something that we can have a conversation about, is whether or not we should look at adjusting those permit fees. I'll check on the best practices piece. I haven't had a conversation with Joe Fisher about that. To the other point regarding the questions and answers for the Budget Committee, Greg, I'm pretty sure I put those, the ones from this year on the city's website. The like three or four page memo that had all the questions with the answers, so that's on there for this year. We did not do that in past years. And if you'd like copies of the ones from past years, the questions and answers, we can certainly give those to you. It's a public record. And I do think that what we'll do going forward, because I think you make a good point about the fact that those questions are asked and answered. Normally what we do is I cover those questions and answers as part of that meeting. This is a little bit different, because we were doing the Zoom thing, but I do think there's value in posting those memos afterwards, so that people can see that after the fact as well.
Robert, that raises a question I've had for a while, and it seems to kind of fit into this. I've noticed when I review minutes from our past meetings, and I don't know what is common practice among communities, but quite often you'll see something written like, "Council had a discussion about XYZ," but it doesn't really go into any detail about if there were concerns, who asked what, what was the outcome.
Yeah, and minutes aren't a transcript.
Right.
But I do think that at times, there could be a better job of filling in some of the blanks. I think we, this year specifically, I asked for some additional detail on some of the conversations at the Budget Committee, so you would have noticed there was a lot more detail on a lot of those, to try to capture those pieces. And the other part of that would be, when we get, when you get your packet, if you see that and you would like some additional detail, shoot me an email or give me a call, and we can amend the minutes to add any salient points that should have been included that were not.
Well, I can generally remember most of the details, but if a citizen, somebody that had not been involved was reading it, they might wonder, well, what was that all about?
And they can certainly go and watch the meeting online.
True.
And they can also come and check out the DVD to watch it as well.
Okay, good idea.
But we'll do a better job of, you know, if it's a brief discussion about trying to fill in some of that blanks to make them a little bit more thorough.
Right, and maybe making sure that citizens are aware of the DVDs and the taped meetings and so forth, because that's a good idea. Thank you.
Just following what Gary's question was, it's okay, we can remember it, like I could remember what happened last month, but if I tried to go back a couple months, it isn't going to be there.
And the main thing, so one of the things that we have to make sure is very accurate are the motions and the votes and the who was present and those details. And I think we do a good job of capturing the substance of the item that's being discussed, because we use a lot of the information directly from the explanation on the council action form from the staff report. But the kind of intricate discussion about something, I think we can do a better job of filling in some of those blanks.
Mr. Amor's mentioned something about past budgets no longer being, do we have a policy for?
I'm not sure how many we maintain on there. One of the things that we're in the middle of right now is transitioning to our new website, so we can take a look at that. There's not a, there's not a requirement for how many years of budgets you keep on the website. There is a record retention that addresses how long you have to maintain copies of the budgets.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are available.
Okay. And how long do you have to keep the budgets?
I can't tell you.
Oh.
Is permanent retention? Permanent retention.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? All right, we're moving into public hearings, and we have a continuation of a public hearing. It was, the hearing is still open for the ordinance to be read by a second time by title only and considered for adoption during this meeting. The rules of order were read at the last meeting, but I'm going to ask that they be read again tonight before we go to staff report and take comments from council. So could we have a reading of the rules of order, please?
Rules of order for quasi-judicial public hearing. The city council will conduct one quasi-judicial hearing. These rules of order are applicable to the public hearing for a right-of-way vacation, file number one, vacation 21, applicant Roger Goodman. The hearing will proceed as follows. One, the mayor will request the staff report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the issue under consideration in the application. As part of the staff report, the applicant may have the opportunity to address the council prior to public testimony. Two, the mayor will then accept public testimony relating to the matter. There is a three-minute time limit for the testimony. The order will, order of testimony this evening will begin with that of proponents, those in favor, followed by opponents, those opposed. The ending, and ending with those neutral to the ordinance being adopted. The meetings will be available for viewing via the city's scheduled Charter Communications Channel 180, beginning at 6:00 PM, July 7, 2021, on the La Grande Alive website and/or on Eastern Oregon Alive TV Facebook page. Three, the proceedings are being electronically recorded to be converted to written minutes. Four, members of the city council may ask questions of the staff at any time. Five, subsequent to deliberation, the mayor will then close the hearing or continue the hearing at a specified time and place. Six, all decisions must be based on findings of fact from the staff report or evidence of testimony received which relate to the criteria of the land use decision. Seven, an appeal of the city council decision must be made in writing to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, together with the required fee within 30 days from the date of the final decision. C, a counselor must declare any ex parte or pre-hearing contact, including the person's name and the nature of the discussion, as well as any site visitations. Counselors should declare any personal or financial interest in this matter and may disqualify themselves from participating in the hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to, oh, excuse me, counsel, does any counselor wish to make a declaration? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the right of any counselor to hear this matter? Let the record show that there are no challenges.
All right, thank you. And that, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and councils. This is a second reading of an ordinance that you considered last month. This is a request to vacate 10 feet on the west side of Walnut Street, within the entire block between Benton and Lake Avenue. And this vacation would allocate that 10-foot strip, remove it from public right-of-way and allocate it to the adjacent property for their yards and setbacks for new development. And there was no public testimony or opposition heard at the last public hearing, and we've not heard anything prior to this meeting. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Mike?
I think I asked this last time, Mike, I know that that vacation, it coincides with what has happened already down Walnut. Only the direction has, isn't it?
Correct, yeah, the block to the south has had a similar vacation, and so this vacation would keep the right-of-way in alignment with what has occurred in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Public testimony? Council discussion?
Very routine.
Yes, very routine. So I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance vacating the west 10 feet of the Walnut Street right-of-way be read for the second time by title only, put to a vote and adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Additional comments or discussion? We have a reading of the proposed ordinance for the second time by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, vacating the west 10 feet of Walnut Street, public right-of-way between Benton Avenue and Lane Avenue, all being adjacent to the properties described as being in Township 3, South Range 28 East of the Willamette Meridian, Section 06 AB, tax lots 192202, La Grande, Union County, Oregon, and declaring an effective date.
Just very quick, I think that, I think you said 28 and it was 38.
Yes, correct.
Just a correction.
Yep, you're correct.
All right, so we've got a motion, a second and a reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving on, no unfinished business. We have one, two, it looks like six items of new business. The first one is to consider a resolution to renew the workers' compensation for all municipal personnel. Anita is not here. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One of the things that we're required to do is to identify who is covered for workers' comp volunteers and whatnot. So the resolution that you have identifies who our volunteers are, what the committees are. One of the things that we are going to have to do a little bit differently this year, because there's a change in workers' comp service providers for us. CIS is not doing it anymore. We're going to have to change a little bit the way that we track hours for events and meetings, volunteer participation, and so that's something that we're going to be implementing this year in a little bit more detail than we have in the past. We were able to, in the past, identify for some a presumed number of hours, but they're wanting a little bit more detail. That's just an aside that goes with this, but again, it's just a housekeeping piece. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Just clarification, you said CIS is not, not carrying workers' compensation?
They have a third party that's doing it now.
Okay, all right. Questions for Robert?
I'm assuming for the council, you just kind of estimate how many hours?
We're going to keep track of you.
Oh, yeah. We have to wear a tag or something?
Yeah, we have tracking devices.
Subcutaneous.
Okay.
Any public comment? Council discussion, questions? If not, a motion?
I move the proposed resolution renewing workers' comp coverage for all the municipal personnel be read by title only, put to vote and passed.
Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Could we have a reading of the resolution by title only, please?
A resolution of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, extending workers' compensation coverage to all municipal volunteer personnel, establishing assumed wages for volunteers and repealing Resolution 4780, Series 2019, and all other resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herein.
All right, we've had a reading, and we had a motion, a second and a reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? All right, second item of new business is authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Tactical Business Group to perform ambulance billing services. So Chief Cornford.
Good evening. We are here to request a change in our ambulance billing service. We've been with Springfield Fire for about 18, 19 years now. We've noticed since my return a significant decrease in customer service, both for us and our patients. And I think Springfield is actually trying to get out of this service for other people, so we so we, we put out for some RFPs, got three responses, including Springfield, and did a process of evaluation and came up with Tactical being our best choice. Another good portion of that is we'll save somewhere in the range of $30,000 a year because their fees are quite a bit less, so. Do you have any questions?
I was just going to say, do they, have you seen a report that they are better than than Springfield?
Well, what we did is we called a lot of references and both on the side of, that work for or employ these contractors, and also we, we met with some people and talked to people that had left some of these contractors and kind of evaluated those things. Tactical is fairly new in the business, but their, their manager of billing is actually somebody that came from Springfield, so we have a good relationship and history with her. So with all that being done, Tactical seemed to be the best choice.
And according to this information, they bill at $30 per patient compared to the $52 that we were paying the other.
Yeah, so currently, we have about 1,500 billable calls a year, so that's about $78,000 currently. We bring that down to somewhere in the $45,000 range.
So is there a way to pass that through to people that use the service, or is that just something that?
Well, what it would do is just give us the ability in the budget to, to work with that extra money or not have to budget that much for that service.
But you only, you only charge whatever you get charged for that?
Yeah, we charge a base rate for ambulance calls and that's included in that, along with all disposables, time.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
This is contract for a certain time period. Are we doing like a trial on it, are you?
We would sign a one-year contract with them and it's renewable.
Okay.
And that's what we've had in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Public comments? Can, Roxy, can I get you to go up here, please? Thank you. Only because we need to capture you on, on the.
Roxy Ogilvy. I'm curious, because I don't quite understand the connection between Light Flight and the air ambulance connection. Does that also coincide with the fire department, or is that totally separate?
Sure, thank you.
We have a partnership with Light Flight. They manage our ambulance subscription service. So they do the advertisement, they collect the funds, they pay us monthly what we receive from the ambulance subscription. So that's where you can buy for $60 a year, it'll cover any call that you have, or you can buy it in combination with their air flight services. So that's really our only connection, other than we're partners on calls, but there's no other connection that way. Is that what your, does that answer your question?
Basically, does the effect people have in combination?
Does the change of the ambulance billing? No.
If not, entertain a motion?
I'm, go ahead. I move that we approve the proposed reclassification for the park.
Nope, nope, nope.
Wrong one, sorry. I must have jumped ahead.
I move that the city manager be granted the authority to award and sign an agreement with Tactical Business Group to perform ambulance billing services.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, third item of new business is approving reclassification of the Parks and Rec Director. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2014, when our previous Parks and Recreation Director left, I took a look at our salary structure and felt that it was appropriate to reclass that from a 600 level to a 400 level based on where that fit in terms of budget, personnel, and because that's a downward move in terms of classification, it didn't require city council approval. And what I'm asking to do now is to move that back from a 400 level to a 500 level. As we take a look at the other positions that we have and the relative budgets, levels of responsibility, I, I do think that the Parks and Rec Director should be at the 500 level. The 400 level includes the city planner, communications manager, Parks and Rec Director and the senior accountant. The 500 level is the building official, library director and police lieutenant, and I think that the scope of responsibility for the position has nothing to do with the individual doing the job. It has to do with the functions involved really is more appropriate to be a 500 level. We are in the process of going out for a classification compensation study for the management group, but I felt that this was one that really needed to be addressed sooner, and that's why I'm asking for the council's approval to do that. We'll be able to absorb this within our budget for this year, so I don't see a adverse financial impact. Happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
So just clarification, I, I'm getting used to being in a room and listening again. It's much easier when we were, when we can have headphones or speakers right in front of us. You said this was already budgeted, the increase wasn't?
The amount of money is not, based on the size of the department's budget, we'll be able to absorb the incremental increases.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Robert? Motion?
I, I move that we approve the proposed reclassification of the Parks and Recs Director position from level 400 to a level 500 as presented.
Second.
Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, item D is memorandum of understanding from me and the city and La Grande Employees Association Union for interim library director. And for those that are coming back to us and not, not up to speed, our library director, Kip Roberson, took a new position in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, of all places. And is it Carrie Bushman, who is acting library director at this point? But I don't want to take too much of Robert's thunder, but so.
Well, you can go ahead and do the staff report.
No, no, I, you know, I'm not staff.
So because the now interim library director is currently a member of the Employees Association, order for her to assume a temporary position in management, we need to reach an agreement with the association that delineates what's happened with her accruals, benefits and those sorts of things during the interim period. We've done two or three of these over the years. Most recently, I think, was Joe Fisher as the building official. It's my hope that at the end of the one year of the interim position, that Carrie has done an outstanding job and is interested in continuing, but in the interim, we do have to have an agreement with the association. Thanks to Mary Ann for catching three typos that I had, where it should have been she instead of her. And so I, I have made those changes in the document that will actually be signed, and I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Are you backfilling temporary for Carrie's position?
We are.
Okay. And that, that'll keep the library at full staff?
Yeah, we, for, for about 30 seconds, I thought with the added staff, with the two part-time positions, we might be able to wait a little bit on that. Kip explained to me the way that was a really dumb idea.
Out the door, he didn't have anything.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, and, you know, I was kind of brainstorming it with him and then he called me back and said, you know, probably ought to backfill that position because we don't want to be back in the position where we're, with needing the extra pages and really didn't want to put Carrie in a position where she was trying to do more than just become an excellent library director, and so quickly revised the, the thought on that one.
Questions for Robert?
So I'm assuming this person that you backfilled with will only have a one-year contract with the city then?
I think that the way that we're going to portray it is as it's potentially a temporary position.
Any other questions? If not, a motion?
I move that the proposed memorandum of understanding, does it need to be the amended one or just, okay. Between the city and the La Grande Employee Association Union pertaining to the interim library director be approved and authorized, the city manager to sign the MOU as presented.
Second.
All right, any other comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Fifth item is a resolution to adopt the housing production strategy. Before Mike comes up here, I just want to show people a little bit of what we're looking at. Production strategy is, is this document, I'm guessing probably 100, 120 pages. Actually, interesting reading. I was not able to be at the meeting in April, the work session, and I regret that because there were a lot of questions I had that I think probably got answered at the work session, but I, I think most of them got answered in here. And, and I, I have some thoughts as we come to a conclusion of this, but before I give the staff report yet again. See, we haven't been in public in a long time and I'm missing this engagement. I'll ask Mike Fokus to come, oh, Robert's doing this one.
What? Are you just going to do the rules of order again, or?
No, no, um, no, I don't have to.
That was a different one.
No, good.
That was, that was the vacation.
Good, well, I didn't want to have to do the rules of order twice, so I was just waiting to.
Well, this, this is not a public hearing, is it? So I'm like, oh, okay. Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Yes.
And so this, this is your second reading, so this is the final adoption of our housing production strategy. And so anyway, you're going to be, you're going to be asked to, I guess, approve this and then we'll, then I can move forward with the next steps of implementing the, the four categories of strategies that are in there. The first category deals with code amendments, and at this point, they're all draft and recommendations. Every strategy that is listed in this report has to go through a public process, and it may be refined and it may, or may not be something that we support when we go through that process. And so some of the code amendment pieces, for example, recommend a smaller lot size for housing affordability, and we may decide that the, the lot size proposed is too small and we want to settle on something in the middle, or we want to just keep our standard the same as it is today. But anyway, that's what you're adopting. We've had a work session, we've had a presentation by the consultants, we've had a committee that has gone through this, we've done public meetings, and, and this is the final document that seems to be the consensus that is universally supported for at least moving forward with the recommendation, and I just ask for your support and adoption, so I can close this chapter of our housing study.
Are you going to follow the, their recommendation of the one to three years or, what was it, five to eight or beyond, or whatever, or three to five years, you know, for, for some of the strategies that they were suggesting?
I, I think those are recommendations based on how much as a, as a one-staff office, you know, you know, might be reasonable to expect. I, I would think that we will have the discussions and we may follow that, we may, I'm hoping that for some of the code amendment pieces, we'll be ahead of schedule, and maybe some of the other ones, if they end up being easier to implement, and we like them, then maybe we'll implement those before we get to the five-year mark. And so I think that'll be a conversation that we'll have as staff and council as we move forward and figure out, is that a reasonable timeline, and do we want to step something up into a higher priority because we like it better and we want to elevate that priority to something higher than what was identified in this report? Because we, we have that flexibility, so we, the, the bottom line is we have essentially eight years to implement, or at least attempt to implement all of these strategies, and if we don't, then we just need to document why we chose to not implement one or modify it, because they are intended to accomplish housing goals that the state has established. And so we, we have an obligation to make at least an effort to try to satisfy those state goals.
I didn't know if you were going to use that strategy to try to tackle the ones that they suggest one to three year first.
And I may, and I kind of actually worked with them to help satisfy, you know, set those up, because, because some of their strategies, they've listed it in a different order, and, and we pushed them out to a later date because they're going to require some extra research and, and a little more public involvement. And, and some of those really have to do with, you know, trying to establish some kind of a tax credit program, because those do have a lot of strings attached to them, and I know very little about how to implement that kind of a program. So as, as we learn that, we'll have that conversation and decide. I think that's out there in the three to five-year range, and, and we could have that conversation to see if that's something that works for us.
So Mike, I, again, like I mentioned, I have a number of questions, but I, I just want to let people know that, that there were four basic areas that housing production would might focus on. The first is looking at land use and zoning changes. The second one is providing development incentives. The third one is public projects and resources, and, and the fourth one is, is partnerships. And within each one of those general areas, there's, there's at least two and sometimes several recommendations that, that the city can try. Each one of those recommendations has, has four targets. Affordability, which is basically what the house would, or what the residents would cost. The housing type, if, whether it's single-family, multiple or multiple housing. Tenure targets, whether it's rented or sale, and demographic, typically people that we would, that, people of color, people that are homeless, people with disabilities, seniors and students. So I wanted people to know that so they get an idea of what's in this, in this report. My thought after reading it was, and, and Mike, you spoke a little bit to it, but some of these recommendations have big impacts on different ones of those targets. And, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure whether we had to try all of these recommendations or through some type of a process with the council, would we prioritize two or three to start right off or to set for long term? And what's your take? I mean, I can, some of these seem like you can just, you can make recommendations and then the council will act on them, but I wondered if, do, do we, do we need to set some type of priority from the council? For instance, do we want to hit things, do we want to hit the rental market first? Do we want to try to provide more public housing or affordable housing first? I mean, that's not a conversation that's inherent in here, but it's, the data that's available allows us to make those decisions. So I'm just throwing that out there.
But are, okay, but following that, you're talking about affordable housing, the new project that Northeast Oregon Housing is doing.
Yes.
Is addressing some of that.
Yes.
And is taking some of that burden already off of us.
Yeah, and so maybe what we need to, I mean, what would be helpful for me would be to know if there are any projects.
Yeah.
Out there that are already addressing some of these, and then, then that might shift, you know, what the council decides. I mean, if we want to come up with some sort of development incentive, do we want to focus that on single resident, upscale, single, single-family dwellings, or do we want to do something like, you know, you and I were talking about the other day? You know, high, high, you know, high-scale manufactured home development that somebody comes in and, and is willing to build for us or put together for us? So I, I mean, I think we need to have a conversation as a council about these ideas.
Of where we're at.
Where we are.
Yeah.
And, and maybe some direction to Mike and Robert about where we'd like to see them initially put some effort.
I mean, because right now, there's duplexes being built, there's condos being built.
Yeah.
There's lots of things going that was probably not addressed in this, because they might not have been on the, on the horizon at the time they started this.
Well, I think just about every project you see out there was taken into consideration as part of this, but the fact that it's not complete or in some cases have not been started, even though they have their approvals, you can't consider it, because if that project actually does not occur, then that need is still there. And so as you look at, because we're kind of mixing our housing needs analysis, which is already completed, and we did that last year and, and prior, but we're mixing, I guess, some of this discussion because some of our lower-income housing, the subsidized housing. Um. are not really addressed in this housing production strategy. But those are needs that we have that if some of our projects actually occur and are complete, that'll probably be the lion's share of the need for those housing choices, for those, those lower income. And so our need won't be as great. And then we'll want to focus our priorities on, on other types of housing. But I think for the conversation that the council will want to have, you'll want to, we'll probably want to set up a work session and we'll want to talk about the different incentives. Because first of all, we have to figure out some of those tax incentives are only available through a state program for certain types of housing. And then there's other options where you could do tax, you know, deferment where you're still collecting that tax, but, but you just collect it later at a, you know, at an incremental stage and phase it in in order to try to encourage new development. So there's different options we can consider. But I think as we look at those different options, I think then the council, I would hope we would do this either annually or every couple of years. And the council would establish a priority based on what type of housing do we need right now? And is the incentive that we're offering working? And if it is working, then maybe we're satisfying that need. And next year we need to change our priority and focus on a different housing type in order to try to accomplish all of our needs instead of just, you know, the one or two that seem to be on the lower end, lower-income end and the focus of not just the city but also the state. We also have a high-end housing need for the mid and upper-end housing. And we don't have a lot of incentives that we could offer those types of development. So that's a conversation we need to have is how do we do that in order to facilitate development in that market?
One of the things I liked about this, although there seemed to be a lot of repetition, was a note on measuring progress. So once you implement, once you implement one of these recommendations, we've got to, we've got to make sure we're collecting data to check whether or not it's actually working. And I really liked that each one of the recommendations comes up with a set of a measurement principle. And, you know, it's notable too to say that the bulk of this, I shouldn't say the bulk of it, all of this, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, all of this project was conducted during COVID. So that's, it doesn't surprise me that the amount of, of responses that you had for surveys and the amount of input that we got from, from different stakeholders was relatively low. And I think that piece is, I'm hoping that when we look at some of these recommendations, that there'll be opportunities for people to comment on them as we go along and that we gather some additional input to help maybe refine them a little bit more. And I, I'd like to think too that the council might be open to other ideas that crop up in the process. One idea, I'm not sure that it's in here. I have to, it may be, but I don't, I don't recall specifically with. I mean, at one point we were talking about a housing renewal district, you know, along the same lines as, as an urban renewal district. And I don't know whether that's still something that we want to consider or what it would look like and how it would be unfold or where it would go. But that's something that we want to kind of keep out there as, as we're moving forward with this. Any other questions for Mike? It's, it's really, it's really cool. Is it, is it on, is, can people get to this on the webpage at all?
Yeah, so currently on, on the city's current webpage, it's on there. I don't know if this final form, if it looks like this on, on the planning page. But we should be going live with our new website somewhere towards the end of this month. And we'll be probably transitioning some of the draft documents of this. And the final version will be on there along with some other documents. And so certainly when we start having a greater conversation about these things, there'll be some better opportunities through the city's website to get information and to get involved.
It's, it's worth taking a look at. I mean, the, the stuff at the front end is pretty straightforward, a lot of maps and supporting materials in the end. I'm not through reading it all, but I mean, what I, what I read, it was, it's very interesting, very helpful. Any other questions for Mike? Public comment? Council discussion? It's nice to see us moving in this direction. I'm really, really, I think our housing needs and our housing situation is one of those things that's really holding us back from growing as a community.
Especially right now.
Yeah.
So call for the question?
I'm, I would call for a motion, yeah.
I move that the proposed resolution adopting the housing production strategy dated June 2021 be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could I have a reading of the proposed resolution by title only, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, adopting a housing production strategy.
All right, if there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Most excellent. Moving on to our Parks and Rec Director, awarding a bid for Pioneer Park Softball Baseball Artificial Field Project. Pretty exciting stuff too.
Yeah.
Take it away, Stu.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this project's been in the works for a bit. Just some highlights, we're talking about two different ballfields, one for girls, one for boys. Artificial turf in the infield's only for both fields, so they match. One is Optimus Field, which is a longstanding varsity field for the boys. One is Trice Community Field, which is a JV field. However, it has lights and infrastructure, make, make it more sense to do, to turf rather than the current varsity field. EOU and the school district have pledged $75,000 and $150,000 respectively to the project. They have vested interest, of course, because they both use the facility. Staff, kudos to Kyle. Kyle did all the legwork on this and I learned a lot from him. And he's, he's homesick today. So I'm carrying this, but it's really Kyle's kudos. So appreciate him, I'll just say that. We advertised competitive bids. There were three qualifying bids. The winning bid, as you can see, went to Northwest Sports Turf at 209, 289. There's an explanation in there that there was one qualifying bid that did not really qualify when it was compared because even though it was a low bid on paper, the, there was a key component left out, the nailer boards for the perimeter, which as when Kyle followed up with the vendor or with the bidders, made the bids more apples to apples. So we, we're confident that that was the low bid. No, there was a seven-day waiting period. There were some questions, but no appeals or questions about the winning bid. The project consists of supplying all the material labor for the turf field, which is the artificial part of the infield of those two fields, like I said. Additional costs do include the excavation, moving the irrigation, the drain installation, fencing and the outfield repair. Trice Community Field has that drainage problem in the outfield. And if you've been around longer than me, which most of you have, you remember there used to be a swamp in, through there. And when they filled that swamp, they didn't fill it with great material. A lot of times they just fill the brush and the tree into the ravine and threw topsoil on top. And if you know anything about turf management, that means it doesn't percolate. So when it rains, it's a swamp and you can't play on it. So we need to dig that material out and replace it with good material. The great news is that these, the, lots and lots of people are behind this project. ArtiMac is providing free rock. Brian Bell's going to do excavation. Hampton Paving is going to do leveling and rock replacement. Parker McKinley, the baseball coach and his crew of volunteers is going to be on site. I'm forgetting, oh, and Rob Lane has donated all the dirt to go back in the outfield of Community Field. So really amazing community project, just like every time in parks. People love our parks and have great support. So widespread, community-supported project. So I'm excited to move forward if you award the bid tonight. So, any questions?
Isn't the college building their own baseball field at the moment?
No, the college does not have plans to build their own baseball field at the moment. I'm sure they do in the future. Tom Insko has been a big part of this process with us in meetings and he has not said that. However, I'm sure they want to build their own baseball field eventually. They talk in the range of five, well, I think they talk in the range of three to five years. And people look at him and I think talk in the range of five to 10 years. There will be following memorandums of agreements with the two agencies as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Stu?
That's great.
Good job, thank you. Public comments? Council discussion or a motion?
I move that we award the 2021 Pioneer Park Softball Baseball Artificial Turf Project to Northwest Sports Turf Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $209,289. And further, that the city manager stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents for the bid for the 2021 Pioneer Park Softball Baseball Artificial Field Project.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a motion and a second. There are no other comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that concludes our regular business for our council session. Time for staff comments. You want to stay up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of things are noteworthy. One, there was a chemical plant that went on offline, that we get our chemical supplies for the pool, of course, and our drinking water. You can guess which one is prioritized there. So the pool, however, has an ample supply, we think, of chlorine for sure. That will get us through our maintenance shutdown, which is in September traditionally. So the pool operations hopefully will not be impacted. That plant's back up online now and they're, they're filling back orders and catching up. So we're hoping that we don't get stuck in the traffic jam, but it looks good. The, we were successful in two grants for the additional vault toilet at Morgan Lake. And I know you've seen that on paper probably, but it's kind of fun to say it because I've never worked with those two funding agencies before. The State Marine Board and ODFNW, they've supported projects. The Marine Board has never supported projects at Morgan Lake because this year was the first year they had non-motorized funding because the tags you can buy for your canoes and paddleboards and all that. So that funding, we got some, which is pretty cool. So that's going to happen in the fall this year. And I have, let's see, I've written three grants for this Greenway Trail Extension Project, which is a looped trail extension from the dead end. We have, we have no's on two of those, but there's one pending that I'm excited about that we'll, we'll find out in the fall. But that construction, if successful, would be next spring. So if you want to know more about that, I can explain that later. But essentially, the, the big plan for that is a looped trail that continues another about 1,600 feet onto the two adjacent properties we already own. So instead of a dead end, you'll have a loop back and it will still serve as a future trail extension if, if, if we can pull that off, maybe with the county this time. And the last thing I have is that we're in the process of the Parks Master Plan. I'm not sure the city's had one, I haven't seen one. We've had a Parks Inventory, but this is a widespread community outreach effort. About 500 responses so far. And now we're in the middle of kind of gathering that data and putting it back out to some folks in focus groups that have volunteered to continue to participate. So I'm excited to see what, what the priorities for our department are in the next three to five years. So, any questions?
The river, the, the loop back trail on the river, would that be paved?
Yes, to match.
Okay.
Yeah. And future outdoor exercise stations, if I can get those funded as well, which would be a great spot.
Okay, thanks.
Lots of good work going on.
Yes, yes, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Chief Bell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I have some bittersweet information to share with you folks tonight. Sergeant Chris Rasmussen is retiring effective January, I'm sorry, July 31st. Her last work day is actually going to be tomorrow.
Oh.
Sergeant Rasmussen has given us 25 years of honorable service and all to the City of LaGrande and to our community. I just wanted to share with you guys, we did just crunch some numbers. It's rough, but we figure that Sergeant Rasmussen handled by herself roughly 30,000 calls for service during her service to our city. And if you consider all of the calls for service where she might have been the cover officer involved, we're talking 100,000 calls for service that Sergeant Rasmussen has been involved in, in, in her career with us. And so it's a loss. We're not going to be able to replace Chris Rasmussen. We will fill the vacancy, but it will be sometime. And she's, she's certainly left her mark on our police department. So we're going to honor her tomorrow with a department social for her. And I'm inviting each of you, we'll be at the Riverside Park Pavilion at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. And we're just going to express our gratitude for her service to us. I'll, I'll end with sharing the good news, and that is that we have selected Sergeant, or I'm sorry, Senior Officer Jared Rogers for promotion to the rank of Sergeant. And that will become effective the 21st of, of this month.
Will you fill as, as people move up?
Yep, we'll hire somebody to, to fill the vacancy. Jared Rogers has been in service to the city as a senior police officer now for 23 years. So he too is very valuable to us, but he'll do a fantastic job there.
Thank you for that, chief. Anyone else? City Manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple few things. Mike touched on coming close to getting the website live. Hopefully that'll be by the end of the month. So that's really good news. It's really nice to know that people are reading the monthly report. I had a couple of councilors that I think went through it with a fine-tooth comb and had a number of questions, which we really appreciated. And so Mary Ann specifically gets a gold star. So, well done.
Thank you.
There, and, you know, we get that posted on the website. And it's, it's really kind of amazing, all of the stuff that is going on and things that are getting completed. So I really encourage everybody to take a look at that monthly report to get a feel for what we're up to. The, Mary Ann brought her laptop. One of the things that we talked about when we acquired these was the potential to-go paperless. It's kind of at the council's discretion on an individual basis. If you would like to simply use the electronic copy that we provide you, you're welcome to do that. Let us know and we will stop putting together a notebook for you. We will continue to have a hard copy available in the city manager's office if the public wants to come by and take a look. And we also have the packet, full packet on the, on the city's website. So if you want to start bringing your laptops, you can. Mike suggests you want to be, go ahead and download your packet to the laptop so you don't have to connect to the internet. Otherwise we'll have to get some ethernet cables for you. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on is I'll be putting together my self-assessment for my annual performance review and hopefully get that out to you this week or, or next week. I know it seems like just last year we did one of these, but we'll go ahead and do it again.
So this, we'll handle that the same way. Gary will take staff and directors. Once that's done, then I will sort of combine that stuff and get it out to council. And then once we've got council feedback, we'll meet with you.
Sounds good.
So it's really been a whole year, huh?
It has been a whole year.
It doesn't seem like it was that long ago.
Well, I think we didn't finally get it done until maybe September.
Yes, probably why.
It was long and late.
Yeah, okay.
I tried to convince you last year, you could just go every other year and save yourself some time.
I think I have like four tenths of a cent of step increase room before I'm maxed out now. Not percent, cents.
Well, don't spend it all in one place.
That's all I have, thanks.
All right. Justin?
I would like to thank the fire department, the police department, all of the public works for our freak storm the other night. You guys did a great job. I mean, it was really bad in many places. And of course, it was unfortunate, a lot of us lost our power. But they did a great job of protecting people because it was dangerous. And I just wanted to say thank you to every one of you guys being out there. That's it for me.
Mary Ann? I don't, I do have a question. When, when you were going through this with the changing for Stu's position, all the directors aren't on the same thing.
They're not.
So what is, why is that? Why are, I mean, what is your definition of a director then versus a manager or something?
It has to do with the number of individuals supervised. It has to do with the budget authority and scope. You know, as an example, our fire chief has 15 firefighters, an admin assistant and, you know, what, two, $3 million budget? Our library director has a $500,000 budget, three or four full-time individuals. So they're both directors-level positions, but their scope of responsibility and authority is very different.
I guess I don't think of the fire chief or the police chief in that director position necessarily. But the rest of them, like the library, the parks- That the rest of them, like the library, the parks and rec, the economic development.
Public works would be another good example of a director that has, you know, 30 employees, about $10 million worth of budget, and that's a very different scope and level of authority than the library director.
Okay.
And so, it would not be appropriate to, you know, when I first got here, we had, I think the, I can't remember all of them, but we had a couple of other directors in addition to parks and rec. I think finance director also. And when you take a look at the number of individuals, the level of authority, the decision-making, but all of those things together, there's an inequity there. And so, that's why, as we've had vacancies, I've done some adjustments with those positions to try to make it more equitable. You know, I should not have gone from 600 to 400 with the parks. I should have gone from six to five, in my view. And one of the things that I really want to get addressed with the compensation study that we're going to do is compensation study, not a salary survey. It's a huge distinction because we can find out what people are paying a library director, what, you know, how much they're making in Troutdale or Hermiston or whatever. But what I'm particularly interested in is what is the level of responsibility? And then, also, the market value. So, what is the comparable salary? But perhaps more importantly, the internal equity between those positions. What is the correct spacing between the fire chief versus the police chief versus the library director versus a police lieutenant versus a water superintendent to make sure that we have those arrayed correctly, top to bottom? Because my sense is we have, we have folks that are doing more work and more responsible work that are actually making less than someone because of where they happen to fall on that scale, and I want to fix that. And I also want to make sure that we're paying a competitive wage. Because as we look at some of our recruitments for the director-level positions, we don't see a lot of applications for those positions. And I know a chunk of that is salary-driven. I know a chunk of it is where we are. There are a lot of factors that go into that, and I think we really need to solve the compensation piece of that because that's within our control to influence. I can't influence those that don't want to live in a beautiful place like this. I can't help them. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Okay, Gary?
I don't have anything personally. I did have a question for Mike. I was curious as to whether we've heard any more, particularly from citizens, regarding that somewhat controversial floodplain mapping project we have going?
I have not heard any negative information from folks. So, since we've had our council meeting and had the information out for the public, I have had a number of property owners, you know, contact my office to kind of navigate the map, to kind of figure out what their property is. Because for some folks, it's, you know, they're not quite as tech savvy, and the map isn't quite as easy in some respects. But so far, all of the property owners that have contacted me since that meeting have actually benefited from the change. Either the floodplain will be reduced on their property or in some cases, they'll be completely removed. And so, I've only had positive communication with folks since our meeting, even though I know there's some folks out there that are going to be adversely impacted. And I'm anticipating having a conversation with them when we get closer to getting our final maps.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
All I want to say is welcome back.
Yeah.
It's good to see people. It's good to be back face-to-face. We managed to handle, manage business pretty well with Zoom, but it's not like having a live crowd. So, welcome. We're going to take five minutes or so after I adjourn this meeting before we start our next meeting with the urban renewal business. So, at this point, I adjourn our regular session, and we'll be back in five. All right, we're back in and ready to roll for the Urban Renewal Agency. So, I'll call to order the Urban Renewal Agency and Urban Renewal Advisory Commission meeting. And ask for a roll call, please.
Steve Clemens.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozarth is absent and excused. David Glave absent and excused. Nicole Howard is also absent and excused. Mary Ann Meesner.
I'm here.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Roxy Ogilvy.
Yes, present.
Alana Carolo.
Carolo.
Carolo, I apologize.
Yep, not a problem.
And Matt Scarfo is also absent and excused.
All right, and just for people out there, Alana and Roxy are members of the advisory commission, and they will participate in a portion of this meeting this evening. So... Our agenda is all ready to go. We have one item on a consent agenda, and that is approval of regular session minutes, and I will entertain a motion for that.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented, or the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Any public comments? No public hearings, no unfinished business. We have two items of new business, the first of which is to make an appointment to the Urban Renewal Advisory Commission. That is my, my, my chance to speak some more this evening, although I don't keep it brief and straight to the point. We have one submission. Alana is, has agreed to serve again on the commission. So, this is a, we have a five-member advisory commission for the Urban Renewal Agency, the district. And these are people that are actively interested in curing and preventing conditions of blight and improving the physical, economic, and social conditions within the Urban Renewal District. And we meet as, on a need, as need basis for recommendations to the, to the agency. So, with that, I move that Alana Carolo be appointed to Urban Renewal Advisory Commission for the remainder of the three-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2023.
I second.
All right. Conversation? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, that's first item of new business. Second item of new business is the big one, and that is to evaluate calls for projects. And at this point, the advisory commission members, Alana and Roxy, will participate. So, feel free to ask questions, engage as we move through the presentation from agency manager stroke. So, take it away.
Yeah, before we do get into the discussion, do any members of the agency or URA have any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest you would like to disclose?
I just wanted to disclose the organization for which I'm employed receives transient lodging tax dollars, in part contributed by one of the entity's Travelodge. I don't see this impacting my role in tonight's meeting unless the URA or district manager sees it.
That would not be a conflict. It's a collection of a tax. It's a source of income. It would be like the city council not being able to do land use because you are paid your small stipend, in part because of property taxes.
Yeah, got you.
That's not a conflict.
Yeah, you're good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that, Alana. All right, Mr. Stroke?
Yes, thank you. So, I have on the TV kind of our presentation on the projects, and I'll kind of walk through this. So, the way that the call for projects process will occur is I'll do a staff report on each of them. Any questions that you may have, we'll go ahead and answer. We'll take an opportunity for the agency and the URA to discuss the projects. Then, we'll do a break. During that break, you'll award your 40 discretionary points. You should have a scoring sheet in front of you. It's 40 points for each project independently. You'll give those to me. I'll put them into an Excel spreadsheet that will magically give us numbers. We'll reconvene. You'll see the rankings and then vote on funding. And again, as the mayor indicated, the URA also votes on that. And just to kind of review the process that we followed, we initially asked for applications to be submitted by April 30th. We got very poor response, which caused us to go ahead and extend the deadline to the end of May. We did receive only two applicants. Those were reviewed and deemed complete. And staff did score the two projects, so we provided those numbers to you as part of your packet. And you had an opportunity to review the packets. I did not get any questions about any of the projects from any members of the agency or the URA. They're both pretty straightforward. And we're now at the point of doing the presentation on those projects. The first one that we'll talk about is the Travelodge. This is very much a external project fixing up the facade of the building. It's $157,000 total cost, and it'll renovate the exterior, including new doors, railings, address some soffit issues. And so, you really have some deterioration and blight involved with this. You should really dress that up and make it a more safe and attractive front. It does meet the goal of revitalizing downtown. It's a commercial property. It'll make it more attractive, and will encourage travelers to stay in our downtown. Any questions about this project? Okay. And again, I've mentioned the scope of the project and the $157,000 exterior. Yeah, oh, I forgot to mention the repainting the exterior as well. Valley Insurance, this is on Washington. $567,000. This is going to add an additional two-story, 2,000 square feet of building onto the existing building. It's going to include an ADA wheelchair lift. One of the issues that this particular business has is a lot of their clients are older Medicare recipients and they don't have ADA accessibility to their upper floor, and so they're not able to serve their clients to the level that they would like to. So they're going to add a new 2,000 square feet, add that lift, rehab the parking lot, make it more accessible, and it's going to allow them to add a couple of new staff members. It will also create some available office space downtown that could potentially be occupied by other businesses because they'll be moving into portions of the new segment that they're renovating and adding. Questions on that one? Okay. So that was the overview of those. And it's now the point for the agency to kind of discuss the projects. Any thoughts before you do your individual scoring?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, this is just a general comment, and Robert, I think I asked you about this when we had, when we had lunch last week. One of the elements that we, we are asked to assign points to is if the project is well capitalized.
Yeah.
And, and the materials, help me if I missed it, and I don't think I did.
You didn't.
So I didn't, I didn't give either one of these projects any points for that because I didn't see any evidence. And yet, in our conversation, you assured me that both of them have adequate funding to do the project.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I just wanted people to know that, that at least that one item, I didn't put anything there. And I'm, I'm wondering if after, you know, do, do we need something in the future inside, inside of the, the packet that agency members and advisory community members get that says, just a little line, two lines, fully funded, evidenced by such and such?
Yeah, and that's, and that's a good question. One of the things that we don't include in the packet are copies of letters of credit, that sort of thing.
And that, that makes sense. I don't need to see that, but I need something.
Yeah, and so that's a point well taken. I think that we could have done a better job of adding some additional detail regarding the financing piece to give you a little bit of a better feel.
And even if, even if that's in the staff report, you know, does that have to be a one-liner? We have evidence of this, bam. Then I can go, okay, that piece is, or else we just take that piece out of our.
That's what I was going to say, because I had the same question.
We'll fix that.
Okay.
And the other piece, I really thought that we took off the community comment, because it's just a recap of the, of the business telling us what they're doing.
Yeah.
I don't feel like it's a community comment.
Yeah, the intent was to be able to use those in the observer and put them out there. What we're, what we're seeing in execution is, it's more just of a, of a kind of a statement as opposed to what we originally thought of. One of the things that I think we should do is readjust that. I didn't feel that that was a significant enough issue to do a policy revision. And with the challenges that we've had in the COVID environment and with only three members of the URAK, it was kind of one of those, you know, this is, it really didn't rise to the level of really needing that, but we could certainly look at making that revision. There are a couple of other minor tweaks to it, I think, that we could do just simply for clarification, no substantive change to the scoring and that sort of thing.
But I agree with what Steve said. I, I was looking for that too. I thought, there's no indication.
You know, I think if I, if I remember back when we were revising the process, that one of the purposes of the community comment and part of it was it would, it would give the applicants a chance to speak to the agency in lieu of the presentations that we had at one point.
Right.
And, and, you know, I think there, I think the term "community comment" is.
Misleading.
Yeah, misleading. And, but I would still rather give them, I, I think applicants should have an opportunity to, to make a statement of, you know, what they, what they see as this, you know, what's, why they're, why they're excited about this project, and what is it that, that it can do for them and their business to take them up, take them up a notch. And I think just reframing it, but keeping that piece in is important.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that what most people have historically done is when they're in the application where it's describing your project, they talk about what it's going to do. And so they, they plug those pieces in. But, you know, a, a statement of the importance of the project or kind of the, you know, whatever your message is to convey to the agency in lieu of that.
Yeah.
That presentation. You know, the one thing I will say about the viability, their application does include kind of how they're funding their project, but the validation of that with the other materials we get is the piece that's missing and we can, we can fill that void.
Okay. And commenting on the community comment piece, I think what you just said, you know, I, I can read through these applications and get plenty idea of why they feel it's important and why they're excited. I think one of the reasons we got away from the applicant presentations was because we had some people change the scoring, some funding decisions changed in the moment because perhaps one presenter was a little better or more articulate than another one. So I'm not sure it's really needed at all. I think it comes through the application.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that. What we may do is just simply pull that out and maybe add a couple of words to the application in terms of help, helping to make sure that they kind of frame a little bit better what they're looking to do.
Just a summary of what, why they're doing it is all it needs, okay, yeah.
And, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds. We're talking about process and I want to go back to Robert's original question. Any questions or comments on either one of these projects?
Well, I might have a, a quick question here, and it's not huge, particularly within the, particularly within the context of these. But regarding blight, I noticed that staff provided a few points of, for blight on the Valley Insurance application. I know within the past couple of cycles or so, we had decided as the urban renewal, people not provide blight points for like undeveloped weed-strewn lots and, you know, a parking lot isn't quite the same as that, but it's not totally different either. Kind of wanting some clarification there, I think.
Yeah, and so if you take a look in your packet on the scoring sheet, under the points for blight, I'll go ahead and just read this. This is, preference will be given to projects that can demonstrate the mitigation, reduction, or removal of blight. Undeveloped and/or bare land shall not be eligible for points under this preference category. 30 points scored by the agency with a recommendation from staff. And then the way that we have this kind of laid out is description of blight, potential hazard to environment or public and/or structure is unfit to occupancy, that would be a 30 point. Extensive exterior damage to the property, including structural impacts, that don't rise to the level of unfit for occupancy, 25. Combination of exterior and interior damage, deterioration and/or dilapidation beyond purely aesthetic, 20. Property has been vacant for more than five years, but no other blight, 15. Slight damage to exterior of property, only 10, and then damage to interior property, only five. So that's kind of the array. And I think that the intent with the property being vacant, that's a developed property. So the, the Pennies Building would be a good example of a property that has been vacant for five years. Not really a blighted property, but vacancy is blight in our downtown. And so that's why a, a project like that, if it were here, would get some points of blight. And you guys spent quite a bit of time talking about that array. And in looking at the individual scores that were submitted by the URAK and the agency, there was quite a bit of varying in terms of how many points to apply. And you'll see that when, when we get to the, after I get your scores, I'll show you the, the combined scores for everybody.
And I guess where I'm headed with this, because I don't think it makes a, a great deal of difference in this particular cycle, but if we get back to cycles where we've got quite a number of applications, I'm not sure I want to see one applicant move ahead of another because their parking lot is a little messy. You know what I'm saying?
I do. Yeah, and what the applicant considers to be blight may not be the same thing that the staff views to be blight, which may not be the same thing as what the agency and the URAK view to be blight.
Okay, well, enough said on that, I think.
Roxy?
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Comments. I was waiting for an opening on the public comment section because that is misleading in some respects and needs to be fine-tuned. Secondly, the blight that we've talked about, and I've been around long enough that I know how that came about. It was undeveloped hayfield and it was given points for blight. In driving past Valley Insurance, if you look at that, as my mom would say, it was an ISO. Across from Arts East, that undeveloped piece of property is an ISO, also a potential hazard. And so I think we need to rework and fine-tune that, and I, I agree wholeheartedly. I don't want to see one rise above, but there should be maybe a little tuning in on that. Third and lastly, I did not see, one of the requirements is either and/or architectural plans or drawings. And I'm assuming, because I don't believe I saw any kind of drawing showing exactly how the railing and the doors would look afterwards, so I'm assuming it'll be identical, but that's an assumption, not based on what was submitted. Am I wrong, Robert? There was nothing there?
Yeah, I don't think we got anything specifically on that because it's just a replacement of existing.
Correct.
Like, like.
I didn't.
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to do apples, let's do apples.
Yeah, that's, I, I, and neither, neither one of these applications had construction plans or design that.
Well, I think the Valley did.
Yeah, Valley did.
Valley did.
But I don't think that's a requirement we've asked in the past for construction plans or anything, have we?
It's not of the criteria.
Yeah, but it's one of our criteria under, under.
Yeah, it is.
Business viability and project readiness thing.
Yeah.
Then we had an application that actually did it and one that did not.
Yeah.
Again, I did make a note for, for the Travelodge that, for, for that one in particular, would have been nice to see a mock-up or rendering of what the upgrades and possible paint colors, just to have a much more comprehensive image of, of what that would look like.
The Valley did submit this.
And I do have a separate question, just more on, on Valley Insurance, but more just on kind of how the cost estimate breakdown and then the funding, how those are to be captured. So notice on the total project cost is the 567, but grand total from all sources is 575, 575,000. So I was just wondering, you know, should there be additional, should there be an additional line items if a grand total from all sources matches the total project cost?
You talking about Valley?
One more time? Yes. So it's page five and six, and then kind of jumping to page eight. I don't know if that's in what part, kind of under the application section of the five and six.
Five and six.
I think on theirs, when they submitted their application, they didn't, if I remember correctly, they did not submit their cost sheets at the same time.
Okay.
So it was an incomplete one that they had to come back, and so I don't think that we had them go back and change their application.
Okay.
And I am noting on, on page eight of the application there, and when I looked at it, I, I said private investment compared to public funding, and I, I kind of went through that gyration. I didn't look down in much detail down below when it says source an amount of private investment, and it lists things there. So there is evidence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so as, as an example on this one, where it references a bank loan, there was a piece of paper that referenced that.
Any other questions on either one of the projects?
Do we know that whether Valley, are they plan, I see that they're going to lease some of their office space, but that's just a, a plan that they might have in, in the future?
Yeah, they identified that as just an opportunity that someone could backfill that space. You don't get any extra points for that because they didn't identify any job creation or anything or investment for that, but.
Right. But, but because the, the high-quality family wage jobs are the people they're planning on hiring.
Correct.
Not you, okay.
So if you want to go and take a couple of minutes into your individual scoring, if you're done with your discussion, you can go on that piece of paper. Yeah, we can go ahead and do our recess now while you do that.
Okay. Each, for each project, after 40 points, seven.